Good evening, and welcome to our board meeting for the last meeting of the school year. If we may all stand for the pledge of allegiance. And I would like to ask Ms. Jenny Corbin if she would lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unafraid, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So tonight, I would like to ask the board to join me. And we are now going to recognize our retirees. Donna Mae Atkins. Senior clerk typist will retire after completing thirty years of service. She always brings up, not be, sorry, attitude, and has been an asset to all that she has worked with. Congratulations. John Maruna. Special education teacher will retire after completing nineteen years of service. He is a passionate, dedicated, caring, attentive special education teacher who puts his heart and soul into teaching and reaching his students. Congratulations. Joan Mette. Joan, a school nurse, will retire after completing eighteen years of service. She is a kind-hearted, caring, loyal, and knowledgeable middle school nurse who possesses excellent organizational, record-keeping, and political skills. Congratulations. Patricia Boyden. Patricia, special education aide, will retire after completing thirteen years of service. She generally connects with the students and is, she is always willing to meet their needs. She is an asset for those students as well as her coworkers. Congratulations. Lynda Bernstein. Lynda, elementary teacher, will retire after completing twenty years of service. She has established an excellent rapport with students, parents, and staff. She has demonstrated responsibility and loyalty to the teaching profession. Congratulations. Doris Brown. Doris, schoolless driver, retired after completing twenty-seven years of service. She has a pleasure to work with, she has a professional and caring manner, and she goes above and beyond to meet the needs of her students on a daily basis. Congratulations. Anna Kane. She was unable to attend, supervisor of transportation, retired after completing six years of service. She is a diligent administrator who continually makes an effort to improve her practice by working well with colleagues, learning from others, as well as sharing her own experiences and knowledge. Congratulations. Keith Brown. Keith, head custodian, will retire after completing thirty-five years of service. His cooperative attitude has provided direction and leadership to the custodial and maintenance staff at Riley Avenue Elementary School. Congratulations. Deborah Cato. Secretary or assistant, retired after completing sixteen years of service. She has been a resident of the district through personal services in the high school. She is a master employee who has been a positive and motivating influence. Congratulations. Karen Serena. Karen, a speech teacher, will retire after completing twenty-nine years of service. She is a calm, positive, responsible, flexible, and extremely well-organized professional who always has a smile for all of those who cross her path while offering a word of cheer and encouragement. Congratulations. Suzanne Convery. Suzanne, special education teacher, will retire after completing thirty years of service. She has demonstrated a desire and passion for teaching and learning that has had an extremely tremendously positive effect on her students' learning and environment. Congratulations. Raymond Crum. Raymond, custodial worker too, will retire after completing twenty years of service. He is a team player with a positive attitude and has proved to be a leader in his position. Congratulations. Jeanne Delcay. Senior clerk tyke has retired after completing fifteen years of service. She has been a valued member of the guidance team who is always available to assist students and staff with a smile. Congratulations. Sandra Dorowski. She was unable to attend tonight, food service worker, will retire after completing twenty-eight years of service. She is organized, kind, conscientious, always smiling and hardworking. She takes great pride in all aspects of her job. Congratulations. Margaret Eyler. Margaret, elementary teacher, will retire after completing twenty-eight years of service. She is a dedicated professional with an outgoing personality, a great sense of humor, and a serious commitment to her students. Congratulations. Laura Tureman. Laura, an elementary teacher, will retire after completing twenty-four years of service. She is a patient, responsible, loyal, cooperative, organized, and enthusiastic elementary teacher with a marvelous outlook and love for teaching. Congratulations. Donald Corby. Donald, an elementary teacher, will retire after completing twenty years of service. He is highly respectable, reflecting genuine warmth, caring, and sensitivity to his students. He is appreciated for his dedication and contribution to Pulaski Elementary School. Congratulations. Tony Gallo. Tony, teaching assistant, will retire after completing thirty-one years of service. She has consistently dedicated her time and positive attitudes to all of her students and coworkers. She has been an asset to any classroom and has consistently created and nurtured a positive learning environment for her students. Congratulations. Robert Gilliam. Retired after completing twenty-seven years of service. He is a loyal, cooperative, conscientious, dependable custodial worker who has a great attitude and is a pleasure to work with. Congratulations. Laura, a school nurse, will retire after completing twenty-one years of service. She is sensitive and appreciative for kindness and compassion to the students of the high school. She is highly effective, calm, and organized in meetings, and regular flows of students throughout the day. Congratulations. Deborah Herman. Deborah, a reading teacher, will retire after completing fourteen years of service. She has worked diligently to create a program that helps students to learn strategies, making use to read and write across all content areas. Congratulations. Karen Ivins. Karen, an elementary teacher, will retire after completing thirty-three years of service. She is a conscientious and dedicated teacher. She is appreciated for her interactions with her students, reflecting genuine respect and caring. Congratulations. Patrick Kenney. Patrick, an elementary teacher, will retire after completing thirty-three years of service. She is a conscientious, diligent, and energetic teacher. She is always willing to go above and beyond when needed. She has a flexibility to enhance individual student learning. Congratulations. Carol Kachoff. Carol, a special education teacher, will retire after completing seventeen years of service. She is caring, friendly, and respectful to her students. She has demonstrated enthusiasm for teaching that is demonstrated by her creative lessons and her willingness to explore new ideas. Congratulations. Jane Higginis. He is an art teacher who will retire after completing twenty-three years of service. He is passionate, dedicated, and talented. He has maintained an outstanding rapport with his students and has created an environment where students are comfortable taking creative risks. Congratulations. Carol McQuarrie. Carol, a Spanish teacher, will retire after completing fourteen years of service. Her determination to have all of her students achieve is a unique motivating factor for her to excel as an educator. She creates a classroom environment which enhances student motivation, engagement, and learning. Congratulations. Anthony Madonia. Anthony, custodial worker, will retire after completing thirteen years of service. He is conscientious, dependable, and is well-liked by coworkers and staff. He is knowledgeable and skilled at his job. He is helpful and always willing to assist coworkers. Congratulations. Francis Mars Comfort. Francis, a ESL teacher, will retire after completing thirteen years of service. She is a dedicated educator who demonstrates sensitivity and relatability to students and their families. Her teaching style promotes student self-responsibility while communicating effectively with her students. Congratulations. Peter McCarthy. Senior naval science instructor, will retire after completing thirteen years of service. He has a passion for this subject that creates a culture for learning. He has developed skills and ideals which have led his students to high achievement at drill meets and program inspections. Congratulations. David McKillop. David, a social studies teacher, will retire after completing thirty-four years of service. He is a highly effective team educator and is well-respected in the high school. He is always there with a smile. Former students nominated him in the directory of America's Best Teachers because of his dedication to the profession. Congratulations. Frank Minucci. An English teacher, will retire after completing twenty-eight years of service. He recognizes the importance of meeting a student's emotional needs and individual interests in order to achieve academic success. He has established a very positive rapport with his students and colleagues. Congratulations. John Nobula. John, a school psychologist, retired after completing thirty years of service. He displays high standards of honesty, integrity, and confidentiality in interactions with colleagues, students, and the public, and advocates for students when needed. He is always professional and available to help in any situation. Congratulations. Julie Rosita. She is unable to attend tonight, an ESL teacher, will retire after completing thirty years of service. She develops classroom strategies to help her students achieve success in the general education setting, as well as help students learn and improve their English proficiency. She supports the office and colleagues when second language families need help with translation. Her response to family concerns is handled with great professional and cultural sensitivity. Congratulations. Robert Schilling. Robert, an elementary education teacher, will retire after completing thirty years of service. He is a dedicated educator who has put his heart and soul into teaching, encouraging and motivating his students to achieve. He has made a positive impact on the lives of the students he has worked with. Congratulations. Susan Trappur. Susan, an elementary teacher, will retire after completing twenty-nine years of service. She is a caring and enthusiastic educator who has made every effort to stay current with regard to her teaching practice. She has demonstrated enthusiasm for her profession. She has been an asset to her students and coworkers. Congratulations. Brenda, a school librarian, will retire after completing thirteen years of service. She is a passionate, dedicated, and talented educator who has set very high expectations for her student achievement. She utilizes a variety of resources and information in order to help students develop a deeper understanding of the stories and characters in them. Congratulations. Kim Callen. Kim, a special education teacher, will retire after completing thirty years of service. She is passionate, dedicated, caring, and talented. She puts her heart and soul to teaching and reaching her students. She has been commended for her support, perseverance, and determination to the success of the special education program. Congratulations. Cynthia Wojnick. Cynthia, a special education teacher, will retire after completing thirty-five years of service. She has made strong connections with the students, staff, and parents in order to help her students to be successful, independent, and self-reliant. She has been an asset to her students as well as her coworkers. Congratulations. Last but not least, Jenny Luke Horton. Jenny, school teacher aide, will retire after completing 44 years of service. She has been a vital asset to the Palaskey Street Elementary School as a school teacher aide and an office aide. Her positive attitude and hard work ethic has been appreciated by all. She is always willing to assist the students, faculty, parents, and staff of the Palaskey Street Elementary School. She has produced plays and presented speeches of Martin Luther King Jr. and President Barack Obama as a culinary event to Black History Month involving students and provided a leadership role and model for all. Congratulations. And to continue our celebration, another round of applause for Karen. To continue our celebration, tonight we're also recognizing those receiving tenure tonight. So, Amanda Ryan. Heather Alamos. Charles Regan. Sean O'Hara. Maria Casamassa.
For anybody who had missed with hugs after the meeting.
Lindsay Foose. And last but not least, Mr. David Winks. Another round of applause. If you don't mind, would you like to have all the tenured faculty and also retirees to gather outside so Sandy can take a very nice photo of us all? That'd be greatly appreciated.
Today, parents, grandparents, and siblings listened enthusiastically to a patriotic concert as a salute to the American flag. And then over at Palaskey, students got a lesson in American history on Flag Day. 400 5th grade students, many dressed in white and blue, sat in a semicircle around the flagpole, and they learned the story of the American flag. Their attention was fixed on the NJROTC cadet color guard and six women representing the DAR, the Daughters of the American Revolution, who taught them about the Stars and Stripes. I also want to congratulate some of our seniors who are going on to colleges and high schools. Graduating senior Blake Carrera is headed to the University of Maryland to play lacrosse. Among his many awards, Blake was recently named to Newsday's All Long Island Boys Lacrosse Team. Senior track star Luke Colter is the most highly decorated and accomplished male distance runner in Riverhead High School history. He was second in the New York State 800 meter, fifth in the New York State Large Schools 1600 meter, All Long Island Newsday Track and Field Team, All County, 1600 meter and 800 meter. And Luke is going to be running for Stony Brook University next year. We'll be sure to keep our eyes out on all of our graduates, to see how they're doing as they go forward. Luke, Curtis Flippin, and Madeline Batista attended the Section 11 All County Track and Field Dinner. Luke, All County, both the 800 and 1600 meter run. Madeline Batista, All County, in the high jump. And Curtis Flippin, All County, and winner of $1,000 scholarship from the Suffolk County Track and Field Coaches Association. Just want to say congratulations to these students and to their really significant accomplishments. And then also want to say congratulations to Shannon Zelpin. She has recently completed the Girl Scout Gold Award, which is the most prestigious level of scouting, which is equivalent to the Eagle Scout. The Gold Award requires a Girl Scout to do 80-plus hours of sustainable community service. And we thank Shannon for all that she's given back to the community and congratulate her on this prestigious award. And just want to end, as I said, we're very excited to acknowledge and congratulate our seniors this Saturday at 9:30 at the Killip Field. It's supposed to be a beautiful day, so looking forward to seeing everybody there. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Karen. Opportunity for board members.
I think it was a very nice thing tonight. I'd like to wish all the retirees good luck. Don't come back for a letter of recommendation we're not giving them out. For the tenured teachers, good luck. And the other part, we always go through this quick. On the consent agenda, we did appoint a lot of new teachers that are replacing the ones that went out today. So I'd like to wish them good luck and they better start learning the school form. And I'd also like to thank the ladies from the kitchen for tonight's cake and coffee and everything and keeping that moving fluidly because if we were in charge, it would've been a mess. It would've ended up being a food fight. So, thank you for everybody.
Thank you, Ms. Karen. Opportunity for our CFA. She's probably outside. Opportunity for members of the community.
I'm the president of Riverhead Pico. This is Captain Saver. I'm Sarah Brennan. This is Captain Farrell. We just wanted to talk about how excited we are for Lake next year. We just got back from Riverhead Town Hall. We got a bunch of awards for Gulf Green that we just did over the past couple of months. But yeah, thank you. We just kind of wanted to come and talk. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm going to bring along a time to talk about. I actually had a question on an item on the agenda. I missed the speaking slot one. The codes. Even though I've questioned the board a few times about budget transfer, why are we standing in codes and not putting the accounts that the fund are coming from being moved to?
I'm going to say the same answer. It's standard practice. This is what we do. This is what the state of Europe does.
Okay, but this is taxpayer money.
Yes, and it's standard practice.
There should be no code. It should be clearly stated where the money's coming from and where it's being moved to.
It does.
And the last time you told me that there is some law that says that prohibits the accounting from being put on the agenda. I wouldn't be able to find any such stuff.
No, it says it's standard practice. Everyone uses the code.
Right, I know. What I'm going to do is I'm going to fill out a FOIL, and I'm going to FOIL these documents. I shouldn't have to do that. It should be made on the agenda. I shouldn't even have to come to the podium and ask what they're for. I should be able to read it from the agenda and understand how our money's being spent. Is this something that the board can stop thinking?
No, it's standard practice.
Why are we using codes and not just putting the account names? It should not be a secret.
It's not a secret. Everyone knows the codes.
No, it's not. We shouldn't be using codes.
It's standard practice in New York State. Everyone knows the codes.
I have one for another topic. I have a question about the APPR.
Yes.
Has or the district plan been submitted to the state already?
We're submitting it by... We actually just came to an agreement. The board needed to sign off on it this evening with both the RCFA and our Riverhead Administrators Association. And it will be submitted before July 1st.
Okay. Now, I know that there was some changes that had to be made to the APPR plans as opposed to what we had previously. My understanding is there's a 50% component of it now that's supposed to be based on... I believe there was a choice in assessments that could be chosen for that part? What did our district choose to do?
No, as you may be aware, we're happy to share information with you, but it was the assessments were decoupled from the teacher evaluation, so they're not part of the teacher evaluation at this point for four years, I believe, Mr. Winks. Is that correct?
Oh, and they do the moratorium. That's not a permanent.
That's a moratorium, yes. And we're not using that... We're not using the 50% of the assessments.
Right, but as of right now, you still have to submit a plan that shows that...
We have to submit a plan to show how we're calculating assessments. We're using high school regions.
Okay, so what does the plan look like in a nutshell? So that the public, we taxpayers, know what does this plan look like?
We have to, you know, once it's approved by the state, which we need to have it approved, we'll be happy to... Actually, we're required and we'll do. We'll put it online on our website. So we're happy to share.
Oh, it's on the website?
It will be once it's approved. We have to submit it July, by July 1st, which we plan to do. And once it's approved by the state, there may be some changes, which sometimes occurs. We'll post it on our new website so everyone can see it.
Okay. Oh, the reading of the policy for the school safety plans? Do we have a policy on the school safety plans? And it's on the website?
Yes.
Okay. Because I checked it, I would say a couple of months ago, and it wasn't actually a policy. It was just something that just stated that there needed to be a policy, that the state required a policy. I didn't really see what the procedure and what the actual policy was. Has that been updated?
We're having a... We had a first reading because there are new requirements from the State Education Department. So, once we have three readings, then we will post the new policy, which has to do... There's a number of new regulations from the state, including the number of drills that you have to have, the type of drills that you have to have in your school. So that's all been revised based on the recommendations from...
And there also has to be a component for how parents ought to be notified about the fact that there's threats made against the school and the fact that there's a violent incident.
Yes, because the regulations, and it will all be posted right after the 30th.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Who's holding? Would you... You good? Okay. Okay, that's it. Okay, that's it. Motion to adjourn. Thank you, Ms. Lynn. Second, Mr. Thor, all in favor. Motion carried. See you soon.